Okay, welcome to the Village Board of Trustees Workshop Meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 24th. It is now 7:05 PM. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let us remain standing and think about our service, men and women, serving our country in the armed forces of the United States. And also, I would like to take a minute and reflect on those who have gone before us. And my sincere condolences to Trustee Barone on the most recent loss of his brother William, and also to the Janito and Curly family on their loss. It's been a tragic week here in the villages suffering. I would also like to remember Lieutenant John Mallon. Lieutenant Mallon was in the suffering police department for 40 years. He left us last week. He was raised in the village of suffering and rose through the ranks of the suffering police department. Forty years of service. Thank you, Lieutenant Mallon. Thank you for your service and may you rest in peace. Thank you. Okay, at this time I have a roll call vote. Trustee Barone.
Present.
Trustee Saberman.
Present.
Trustee Albert.
Present.
And Trustee Corrigan.
Present.
Thank you. Okay, the next upcoming meeting, a regular meeting of the Village Board of Trustees will be held on Monday, March 1st at 7:00 PM. The next workshop meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 29th at 7:00 PM. And the following Village Board meeting will be April 5th. Is everyone okay with those dates?
Yes.
Okay, next up is Lafayette Theater renovation project. Jack of Cork will present plans to renovate the renovation project at the Lafayette Theater.
Okay, good evening. It's Terry Rice. I think I will speak first and then Ari will give you some more information. I think all of you know what a important part of the village, the Lafayette Theater, has been for decades. I remember seeing the lady, Lady and the Tramp when I was a little kid there. I was probably five. And I think everybody remembers going to movies there when they were young. But more importantly, it's been a key stone of the downtown business area. The Ben Moshe family fortunately has been able to keep the theater in Suffolk and to preserve it and keep it as the gem that it really is. The theater business, movie business was somewhat challenging even before COVID. Now, of course, it's just devastating. I had been to Portchester, Tarrytown, and Anglewood where they have old theaters that they use for various entertainments, including bands and other live performances. And I wondered why that hadn't happened in Suffolk. And lo and behold, Ari called me a number of months ago, and that's exactly what he was proposing to do. And I have observed in those other locales, what a wonderful attraction it is for the business area. It brings people in from miles and miles around. And of course, they use the restaurants and walk around and visit the retail establishments and so forth. So I think his plan, as he's going to describe it to you, is extremely beneficial to the village and will enable them to maintain and preserve the Lafayette Theater for future generations. We've met with the building inspector Steve Conley, and we know what our route is as far as any zoning approvals that are necessary. But there's one hurdle that we need to address with the Village Board. Obviously, when you have bands, they play a little louder than a whisper. And you have Chapter 175 in the Village Code that relates to noise. And there are a couple of provisions in there that could create a problem. And there's also a solution that we could work through, I think, with the board. One of the provisions in Chapter 175 says that the using, operating or okay, the using operator permitting to be used or operated any device for producing, reproducing, or amplifying sound, including but not limited to a radio, tape player, or television in such a manner as to create a noise disturbance constitutes a violation. In addition, there's another provision that says the use of any sound-producing, sound-reproducing, or sound-amplifying device so as to cause the sound produced thereby to be audible outside the building or beyond the boundary of the real estate where it originates between the hours at 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM the following day shall be prima facie evidence of a violation. So that's problematic because if you have bands playing, they're not playing at noon. They're playing later in the evening. And, you know, there's going to be a huge investment made in order to put the theater in shape to be able to operate as it's envisioned. Now, there is a provision in Chapter 175 that provides for an exception from the restrictions for various things, including sounds connected with authorized exhibitions allowed by permit of the Board of Trustees. There's a number of different things in that sentence that the board can give an exception to. But one of the things is authorized exhibitions. I've talked to Rob Magrino about this. What we really need from the board in order for Ari to be able to make the investment to go forward with this is some type of exception so that he doesn't invest a substantial amount of money and then find out that he's constantly running into violations. So what I had suggested to Rob is that either the board could consider this to be an authorized exhibition, that term's not defined, or that the, this particular provision in Chapter 175 be amended in some way if you didn't consider this to be, to fit under the authorized exhibition exception, and then grant essentially a permit to the theater to operate later at night. Obviously, they're concerned about the effect on the area. Frank, we're frankly not even sure that there will be noise. It would be outside of the building. But in order for Ari to go ahead and do this, we have to get to a point where he doesn't have a concern about being shut down or running into a bunch of violations as a result of this. And this is really key. I mean, we've discussed this. This is the key to him being able to move forward with the whole proposition. So I'll let Ari describe some of this in more detail. I think it's, you know, having lived in Suffolk for so long, I think this is a wonderful thing for the village and a wonderful thing for the business district. And I'll ask Gary to go ahead. Before I do, I just wanted to again offer my sympathies to Mr. Barone. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Same here. You know, I'm happy to be talking, you know, hopefully about something positive, you know, to talk about now. We've been through so much this year. How much, just, I don't want to take up too much time, but how much of the overall project would the trustees like to hear? Or how much should I go into this, you think, Terry?
I would just say a brief summary and an overview of the project. If the trustees have any additional questions, you know, they'll ask.
Okay, great. Thanks. I don't know everyone personally. I didn't have the opportunity. But a little bit about me first, I was born and raised in Suffolk. And I've been effectively operating as a landlord to the building for almost 20 years. We went through a number of iterations of partners and operators of the movie theater park. And it was seven years ago where I took over operation. That was really where I was able to roll my sleeves up and really understand what running this movie business was all about, why it wasn't surviving, what wasn't working, what was working. And I have to add, there's a lot of things that are working with the Lafayette Theater as it relates to how the community gets together and the love and passion that everybody has for this building in the area. I realized maybe three years ago that it wasn't going to survive. We were in the red year over year. And a large part had to do with movie theater business going elsewhere. And the strain and hurdles that the exhibition industry puts on us with profit sharing and things of that nature. So people were still coming in the doors. People were going to see a movie, and I appreciate everything and all the support that everyone in the community has given us. But it came time to make a decision personally, because it is a personal business investment, that we need to start putting more money into this property. We have to do the bathrooms, no matter what. We have to redo the lobby, no matter what. I just put on a new roof. I just re, you know, I redid all the air conditioning in the building because that was, those were needs. But now there's so much cosmetic stuff that needs to go on. You want to be able to see some type of return on your investment. That's one side of it. But I also want to do something that's going to put this property in a position where it is not, it's not going to be obsolete. That's one thing. But it's going to be sustainable and, and, and really something that is vibrant for the next 20 years. So that's the goal. That led me to do more investigation on what a live venue would look like. Not only the physical sort of renovations that I'm going to need to do to the property, and that's part of it. But is it sustainable? Is there a market for this? And I've had, had a number of conversations with people, people in our community who have been in this business before. I've gotten tons of calls from many different experts in the industry. I've spoken to a lot of operating partners to, to potentially work with them and hire them as third-party management, because I will need someone to do this. I've had forward conversations with one group that I'm not prepared to talk with, you know, here tonight, that has done a full market study with me and feels that there definitely is a gap. Where we're located with Bergen County, Orange County, Rockland County, with the way the bridges work and traffic, there is a gap in this area for a 1,000 to 1,200-seat capacity venue. And we feel that the demand is strong. So that's the, that's the reason why I want to put the investment in. I was born and raised in Suffolk. We're gonna not change the architectural integrity of the building. But we plan to make a number of upgrades that I think are going to be exciting for so many people. First and foremost, one thing that I've always wanted to be able to complete because of the grandfather nature of the building and not being able to touch things. I want to make the whole thing as ADA accessible as I possibly can. So that includes ramps going into the main auditorium. We have three stairs. It doesn't sound like a lot for some of our patrons. It's everything. And, and I want to make it more ADA accessible. I'd like to add, and Terry, we could talk about this later, but as with a live venue, I plan to put in, put in a bar service both in the venue and outside of the venue. I want to expand our lobby, which is very small and tight, to add a retail space where we had an insurance company that just went out. So I'm going to take over that, make that a more lobby bar area. As well as the whole top floor, if you imagine our building, the second floor, there's about 2,000 square feet. That was an old dance studio. I plan to recapture all of that and make it part of, part of the space in some way, whether it's going to be a bar venue, a bar area, or expanded green, green room area, green room space or event space. We plan to, we plan to redo the entire backstage, which hasn't been touched. I can't even tell you. The last it was touched. We have a fixed screen now. So some of the live events that many of you, I've seen in the participant list, some people that I'm familiar with as well. Thanks for joining, of, of shows in front of the proscenium, because we can't move our screen. Many people don't know is we have 30-feet-deep stage behind that screen that we plan to re-engage at sound and lighting. We're going to redo the small green room space that we have in the back. And, and, you know, that's in short, the renovations for the project. One thing that I want to add that, that we're being mindful of is how can you go through renovations like this but still keep the charm and character in the field for what many people experienced going through the movies for all these years? We heard, you know, we heard from Terry, his own memories of going in there. In order to create the kind of experience that we're going to need for concerts, I will have to remove all the seats in the auditorium and have it available for general admission, which is standing room only in the main section of the theater, as well as when we have comedy or a dance company come through, or let's say, for example, an acoustic concert and some that would lend itself more for a seated venue. We're going to actually bring seats in and seat those shows. What we are going to keep and not change is the stadium seating in the back of the theater. We plan to restore those seats if we can, or buy new seats that would look similar. And that way, when people come back into the theater and we are showing a film festival or doing a classic movie again, and the rolling screen comes down, we'll have the fixed seating in the auditorium space. But people will be able to go into that balcony and sit in the same kind of seat that they remember and love. So it's, it's been a very careful and mindful exercise trying to keep the charm and grace of the Lafayette Theater as well as take it into the future. And I, as you can imagine, I've been doing a lot of thought on this, not only for the last year leading up to this call, but for the last 20 years that I've been living and breathing this building. It, you know, I feel like it's an extension of me. And I was the one who picked up on this one code issue, and that's when I, I got on the call with Terry. And just to echo what he said, I don't think there's going to be an issue at all. But I'm talking about millions of dollars that I'm going to be put into this building. And aside from getting this one issue checked off, it also gives me an opportunity to come to the board and, and sort of ask for a buy-in on the concept of what we're doing. Is this, is this what the community really wants? And I'm prepared to do it. But along with it comes, like Terry said, a reason for people in the surrounding area to come to the village, to eat at the restaurants in the village. But there will be more people in our quiet village. And I think it's a good thing. I think it's great for downtown revitalization. You know, but I want to hear it from everyone else before I, before I sort of stand up.
So I know that we have spoken about it a while ago, Ari. And an investment in the theater is just an investment in the village of suffering and an investment in the downtown to help out the local restaurants and retail shops, and even bring additional economic development and growth to the village of suffering. We already have the facility. You already have the facility there. This is what you're, this is, this is something that I know many people have asked about, saying, can the theater do live, live entertainment, concerts, comedy shows, whatever it may be? I think it's a great idea. The rest of the board, I'm sure, will chime in. I'm sure that there is a solution, as Mr. Rice stated. There is a solution to this issue. We just have to work our way through it and look at the code. Has there been any sound testing done from outside the theater?
No, we haven't, we haven't done.
Okay. Okay. That would be interesting to see how much sound actually leaves the theater.
Ari, I have a couple of comments.
Sure.
Let me first thank you. That place is a national treasure. If I told you I moved to Suffolk so I could walk to the theater, I'd be telling you the truth. And I'd like everyone to raise their hand who went to the Darlene Love concert.
Personal friend of mine.
That was such a terrific night. And I'm thinking that that is what you're going to bring to the village on a regular basis in your new theater. Is that correct?
That was a question. Yeah. So if you've been to any first-class operated, small-scale concert venue, and I'm going to use the Capitol Theater in Portchester as, as sort of my, my number-one aspirational model, is going to be that. So, so it won't be like walking into the Lafayette Theater of the past.
How would it compare to Bergen Park, which I frequent?
I'd never been to Bergen Park.
About the Berry Center at Ramapo.
Yeah, no, don't go there. I live in Connecticut right now. So my
You know, those are places that I, that I frequent, and they have comedy
Similar to the calendar of the
Music. They have everything. And the shows typically start at 8:00, and they wrap it up, you know, around 10:00. And you know, I live very close to your theater. I would be very patient or forgiving with some noise that I heard between 8:00 and 10:00 because you would be the center, you'd be the crown and the jewel of Suffolk with this place.
Okay, but it's going to go past 10:00. Pay attention.
Hey. Yeah. Will these concerts run?
So I could talk to that. My, my issue wasn't the every day in coming here. So I feel that, number one, I don't think I could do 10:00. I think most would, would settle out at 11:00.
Okay.
That's the time that's sort of in my mind. But as I think of private events, New Year's Eve, any other reason, or double-stacked, double-stack shows, let's say you have a very popular act and they're going to do two, or a comedian that's doing two, that's when, that's when it's going to come into more of a problem, the timeframe. And just to add to Mayor's, Mayor's comment about the, the decibel levels. As I read in, and what made me most concerned is I think the, the code as it's written, and respectfully, I'm not saying anything is wrong with the code. It is what it is. It sounded to me more, more subjective than anything else. There wasn't any, any measure, and I'm not asking there to be a measure. I don't want to create a benchmark of what's audible and what isn't audible. But I don't believe anything was, was in the code at all as to, as to what is, you know, audible versus not audible. I don't know. It seemed very subjective to me. So I, I, I agree. All of these, all of these programming that we plan on doing will, in all likelihood, end, you know, at 11:00, or the band will stop at 11:00 and people shuffle out. Or the band will stop at 10:00 and people will start shuffling out to go home. It's in those other instances, and I haven't started this business yet. I don't know what it's going to be, where, where we want a little bit more leeway.
I wanted to, oh, sorry.
Okay, go right ahead, Steve. I can wait.
Okay. I just wanted to chime in first of all and say, I think it's a great idea. I think it's something Suffolk desperately needs. I think live entertainment is something that brings people into the area from all over, and they'll, they'll support the local restaurants and businesses. And I think that's fantastic. I think this is a great idea. I just, we were talking about different theaters. I've seen shows at the Capitol over in Portchester and the Tarrytown Music Hall and the Bergen Park, as well as other similar theaters. There's one in, I believe, Huntington, Long Island, called the Paramount. And there's one in Morris Town that I've been to that's also similar. These are all fantastic places to see a show, some of the best shows I've ever seen. And I'm a very big music fan, have been at these smaller theaters because they're very intimate. And it's something I, just hearing this, I'm, this is fantastic, you know? I'm really, really, you know, happy to hear this, coming into the village. What I am curious about, it seems to me, just as far as even getting a sense of whether there'd be any noise, you know, before any special permits would have to, you know, be issued. It almost seems pretty easy to run a test of sorts that you could measure how many decibels inside versus outside, you know, just with a, literally a decibel meter. I have one myself. They're about $50. They're not terribly expensive. And, you know, you could at least even have an idea of what we're dealing with. We might not even be dealing with anything. This might be a whole lot to do about nothing, so to speak, you know?
Um, true. So my, my thought was, are you going to be putting any soundproofing in at all with the renovations? Like, is that something that you could, that you could look at? I mean, I mean, I was inside for the Bernie, for, you know, the Bernie concert, and I'm quite sure. My whole neighborhood was there, and I live right by Charlie. So none of us heard that noise. But in the past, we have had, we have had restaurants or, and bars that were loud continually. Perhaps if we could just continue to work on the communication and do the testing that you had suggested, and see if you can possibly put some soundproofing in. Because I'm pretty sure a band is going to want some soundproofing anyway, because they don't want the feedback noise. So I'm sure some of that has to happen. And I think if we work as a team, and if there's a struggle with something, we come back to the table and we figure it out together. And there's nothing more than, and I have to ask, are you going to keep the organ?
Is that the last comment? Because I can answer those questions.
Yes.
It's, I'll answer that one first. The relationship with NITOS has been, you know, just a deep pleasure of mine for all these years. Dave Kopp, who's, who's the curator for the organ at the Lafayette Theater, was the, one of the reasons why I came to the table, and he was first and foremost a big help for me early on when I was 21 years old, trying to figure out how to, how to operate this building, not knowing anything. So I am hopeful that we're going to be able to keep the organ where it is or in the building somewhere to, and, and still have it play during some events. Or I'm not really sure how the organ's going to fit in our new model. And that's also up to NITOS to decide, because they all, they also own the organ. So I can't speak for them on what their choices are going to be. They, they own that organ, and we allow them to, to house it at the Lafayette Theater. So as far as decibel levels, there is, there are ways to, I think the industry term is to call boom, boom the room, where you blow, you blow it out and, and see what, what the levels are. I think each band is going to be different. I have a comedian, you know, and their, sure, noise isn't going to be a problem. But if I have, you know, a Led Zeppelin cover band in there, you know, it's probably going to be a little bit louder. So I, I don't know enough yet to say if I'm comfortable pretty, putting in all the equipment. I would have to rent the equipment, because I don't have anything there now, if you can imagine. So it's not a question of turning on, you know, the movie as loud as it can go. I would have to load the, load the house with some PAs, some sound, and then play it inside there. That still won't be what my, my house system is going to be that I end up purchasing. So I think the chicken and the egg issue for me is, I appreciate and trust the comment that, let's, let's do it. And then if there's a problem, come back and visit it with us and we'll work it out. I really appreciate that, and I believe that. It's just the, the other side of me says, what if, what if it's, what if it doesn't work out? What if, what if it is too loud? I've already spent all this money and created something that I, I now can't get back. So that's kind of why I'm bringing the issue up now for everyone to address. And just lastly, about the soundproofing, my cost, there's two things that I think come into play to that. One is the cost. It's a tremendous, a tremendous cost to renovate the building in and of itself. a tremendous cost to renovate the building in and of itself. The bit, the the theater itself was designed as a vaudeville theater and silent movies. So the acoustics in there are, you know, attributed attributed for for a theater. I would have to have an acoustician come in, look at sound attenuation cost. I have I have walls that I don't want to open up. I would have paneling or things that I probably don't want to have on on my walls, you know, for the the architectural look of the of the venue. So this seemed like a better alternative for me and my project than looking at soundproofing a building. Because there's going to be windows, there's going to be cracks and leaks somewhere that that I won't be able to capture. And the cost is so high right now to do this to begin with, that I I really don't want to add on another budget line item like that. Especially if we don't think this is going to be as big of an issue because we had live shows there before. We've done things in the past. And there haven't been any complaints. That said, we haven't put in, and I appreciate that you mentioned the Paramount in in Long Island, because that is one of the models that I plan to go for. The Wellmont and Montclair, New Jersey is one of the models I plan to go for, as well as the Capitol. The Paramount is known everywhere. Paramount is known everywhere because they have an amazing system in there. And bands want to go play there because of what they're offering. And I plan to offer, you know, close to, close to that type of of scale. So I'd like to hear more thoughts.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
It wouldn't stay as a movie theater?
It it will not stay as a movie theater primarily. So Terry mentioned this, and I really didn't bring it up in in my you know, my comments to you, this, we we were the lowest man on the totem pole for movie theaters as a single-screen movie palace operating. Now, of all the acceleration of of on-demand movies coming from Hollywood, I can't see any viable way we can operate as a first-run movie theater anymore. So this is really a question of either we do this or we're really doing nothing.
I got you.
The theater is going to stay dark.
You know, from what I know of the around the theater.
Yeah.
There are really, when I think about it, there are so few residences, people living near the theater. If you're working at night with loud music, the store, there's really stores that are surrounding the theater and the Village Hall behind it. And the church on the right side or left side, depending, you know, on how you look at it. So there's so few houses, there'd be so few complaints. I can't even imagine from who that I, you know, I think we could go forward with this and not worry too much about people complaining about this the sound on a weekend, which may end at 10:00 or 11:00 p.m.
Well, I think, do you think, Ari, that you can identify your, what your cutoff times would be and just and just give us a little bit more of a a finite detail of what you envision? You know, there there needs, we need to have a little bit of like a thought plan from what you're thinking, like, will you stop at, will you stop at midnight, you know? Or is it going to be a two o'clock, three o'clock thing? And here we said, well, do whatever you need, you know? But we, we, could we possibly get a little bit more of a finite idea of what you're thinking of timelines and and things such as that?
Absolutely. So in the industry, just to just to comment on Fred's last, just, I don't want to leave that unanswered. We still plan to show movies, so things that were more successful, that drew a larger audience. For example, the BAM Film Festival, or for example, It's a Wonderful Life, that we show some of our bigger classic runs that were community events. We still, I still plan to do those. There were other more curated film production, like, for example, we did the documentary on Studio 54. And we had some of the representatives involved, number one, the filmmaker, but other people that actually worked at Studio 54, which was also a Eugene DeRosa-designed theater. So it was similar, the same architect for the Lafayette Theater back in the 20s designed the Apollo. So that brought in 500 people. Those kind of larger-scale events is or is what we're going to do, but not first-run films.
Okay. Ari?
Yes.
I just went on the the Paramount Theater's website.
Yep.
And I see the things that they have. If this is what you're trying to model, this, I think it's a perfect fit. You know, everything starts at like eight o'clock or 7:30.
Correct.
It's it's going to wrap up, you know, it's not like it's, I don't know where the places are that people in their 20s go, that they don't go out till 11:00 at night. This does not seem to be what you're aiming at.
That's not what I plan on running. So, you know, to answer that question, what is my plan? You know, some more finite details of what my plan is from from, we're in a pandemic right now. So the first thing I don't know is when are we starting to tour again? When are bands starting to go out? When can we all stand shoulder to shoulder again? So everything we're talking about here is still with the caveat that this project may not get off the ground for quite some time. So I want to make that clear. When we operate, which I think is going to be in this, barring everything goes goes right with with customary approvals, with the SLA permitting, construction, vaccines, venues allowed to be opened up, et cetera, et cetera. I plan spring of 2022 is when we could even start to think about getting a calendar, which is going to be six months in advance. There's going to be a little bit of a first-year trial basis. I'm probably going to have to throw money at the problem in a way to get bands to want to come to our new venue when the comps or experience with others in other areas, they may choose to go there instead. But, you know, I plan to really hit the ground running with the first year. I think you're right. 11:00 end time is in all likelihood when it's gonna, when it's gonna happen. Things could happen with the band being late. Things could happen with, you know, some kind of, I don't know, whatever it happens to be, that people can't, you can't start the show on time, you can't. Then you want to get the full sets in, so then it's going to end a little later. There, this is not going to be a a two o'clock in the morning nightclub. You know, that's not what I'm going for. I think most events are going to end at 11:00. We're going to have some special, maybe shows or or, like I said, you know, New Year's Eve is my kind of classic example of when you can't end at 11:00 because everyone wants to count down to the new year. There's, there's no way I could see anything going past one o'clock of audible sound. And and with that said, the majority is going to be, you know, sound off before 11:00.
So would it be unreasonable if you're going to do a special event that everyone would most likely want to, everything that you guys have ever put on has just been amazing. I mean, it's just been amazing. Would it be too much to ask if you're going to do something special that you kind of come to the board and say, hey, I'm, I want to do this and I'm going to need to just get, just let you know, and is it okay so that there's no problems? Right? Because we we do have a bunch of other, you know, we, well, not during COVID, everything is so different, it's it's hard to say. But and do you envision, so that was one of my things, like, if maybe we could just do not a special permit, but just a, hey, brought it to the board's attention and we can let the let the village residents know that there's going to be a special event held and that therefore you might hear a little bit more noise. If someone complains, we have an answer. And we, as a board, have addressed it prior to. And do you envision the, if there is an insane venue coming on, which, you know, we all want the best because, you know, the more the merrier. Do you envision the, I guess, the celebrity or the person that's you're hosting it, so they would be, I don't want to, I don't know the right word, like the actor, whomever the celebrity is that's coming. Would they be bringing their own security for outside? Just making sure that there's no shenanigans going on? Or would you, or are you expecting the Suffering Police Department to?
For the band's protection? That would be.
For crowd control.
Crowd control.
The, the, the talent or the band wouldn't be handling any security unless it was for themselves. I don't, I don't envision this being a strain on, you know, on the, we can, we can talk about it. Maybe I, maybe I should have more detailed conversation of the past of what the police force had to do when you had, you know, 1,000 people sort of in town walking around if if it, you know, if it warrants that. Now, as far as security inside the venue and around on our property, that's going to be handled by my staff using third-party services or in-house security.
Okay, that answers.
Well, you know, we need.
And they'd manage the people who are outside online.
Correct. Queuing people up, making sure that people are safe, making sure people are crossing crosswalks, you know, the right way. What I like about where we are is, is you do have access to crosswalks and sidewalks quite a bit in front of where we are in the streetlight. We will be, again, this is all, you know, I'm, I'm not sure where this, where this is all going to fall once we start designing and really looking at it in more detail. But I imagine the the line queue to get in is going to wrap around our building between my property and Miranda's property towards Village Hall is where sort of the line queue will circle around that way. That's where I have it in my own mind. It's going to keep people off the street and safe. We're going to have guardrails. Everyone's going to know what they're doing, whether they're coming from the train, coming from the B lot, or coming from from an Uber somewhere. They'll know where to go. The the industry benchmark, I think, for security is usually one person per 100 people. So I'm going to start there and then look at our look at our space and see if it warrants putting more on or or taking taking less away and how people are roving versus in a fixed provision.
I mean, obviously, we all think that you're going to be doing some amazing events, and that's why we're we're asking these questions, you know, it just.
Yeah, it's a, it's a lot.
Exciting. It's exciting.
Thank you. Thank you. So
Ari, I I think, Mr. Magrino, so hearing everything we've heard and our options in regards to possibly, if the board is amenable to it, amending chapter 175 is that is something that we could look at with the disturbance, the noise disturbance or the amplification and hearing the noise outside of the building, since it's so subjective to one's ear, I guess.
Right. Well, I, you know, I had this conversation with Ari and Terry a few weeks ago. You know, these types of laws and the codes are frankly subjective, many are are subjective. You know, it's, it's in the eye of the beholder oftentimes. So it does create an issue. To address, first, I'll point out that the the village attorney who crafted this did a good job on the on the law. So he's actually on the on this meeting. But, you know, the exception that that Terry cited to for, you know, sporting events or carnivals, fairs, exhibitions, parades, et cetera, allowed by permit of the Board of Trustees, that goes to, you know, an outdoor carnival, that goes to, you know, Suffering Day when when Lafayette Avenue was closed. So I, I, you know, my opinion was and is that that's not the mechanism to address the issues that they're bringing up. Terry, is this, when you spoke to Steve Conley, is this going to planning board?
Certain aspects of it are. The the theater itself is a use that has existed forever and what areas proposing is consistent with the definitions in in the zoning law for what the theater is. So the theater itself is not an issue. The expansion into the other space is the only issue that's going to require planning board approval.
Okay, but, you know, so issues related to noise could be addressed there with limits. The issue is, you know, I, I don't know what's a limit that's acceptable to the board and that's acceptable to Ari. So, you know, if the limit is, is, you know, 1:00 a.m., you know, is a limit 11:00 p.m., those are issues that need to be addressed. I would say, you know, by the code, the existing code, you know, I don't see a a way around it, you know, what what the ask was when we met was basically not to have it applied. I think, you know, I think that would create some issues. With that said, I don't think that there's you know, a a problem trying to find a solution. But again, I think there needs to be, and I think even the board has expressed it tonight, some type of either limit or 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 guidelines. You know, the word I had used in our conversation was carte blanche. I mean, you know, I guess there needs to be some type of control, if you will. You know, reasonable. And again, that's that's something that often happens in land use applications and decisions by boards that, you know, you set time limits, you know, that the applicant can live with. And, you know, some may say, you know, I, I can't make the project go with that time limit. And then, you know, you see what can work out. What I had suggested to Terry was if he had a proposal for either a change to that noise ordinance or, you know, something with respect to planning board and and some type of, again, guideline or limit, we certainly would be willing to listen to that.
Yep. Bob, is there any way to word anything or or do you need an engineer? That whatever the Lafayette does inside their building and, you know, you could hear it out in their parking lot. And then when you go to the the nearby neighborhoods, the people inside their homes with their windows and doors shut shouldn't have to hear what's going on inside the Lafayette. I would think it would have to be very loud to hear it inside a building a block away. But is there a way to decibel it in a permit?
It's, it's too hard to identify. We already tried that when we had all the bands down in the village. And it was about the, so where the Lafayette sits, and I've learned this from from an attorney, so where the Lafayette sits is much different than the Lafayette Avenue. Because Lafayette Avenue, when there's loud, when there's loud bang-bang noises, it reflects off the buildings and that's when it goes to the residents. We're a little bit more fortunate with the noise with the Lafayette because they're not surrounded by a street of buildings on either side and in front of them. So the noise won't bounce as much. I think it's a much different, I think it's a much different thing than what we battled back on down on Lafayette, where it was a much more congested area.
Was that also outside that you're comparing it to?
No, it was inside.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So we, we could explore just amending the code, code 175 on the timeframe. Is that something?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think what we can do, I wanted us to speak to the board before we did anything, first of all, because we wanted to make sure the board was on board with this and how you felt about the possible interpretation of using the existing provision for allow, the board allowing exhibitions. But if if that's not something that you're you find acceptable, then I think what we can do is amend the code. And I think rather than give amended in total, and tell me how you feel about this, I mean, we can leave the existing provisions as they are, but put in another provision that allows the board to grant essentially an exception. Only instead of going under an exhibition, you can grant an exception or a permit for other uses. So you know, this is not live entertainment like you have associated with the restaurants and bars. This is an, because there it's an accessory use to the restaurant. This is the permitted use. This is an, uh, because there it's an accessory use to the restaurant. This is the permitted use and so it's a somewhat different thing. But I think, uh, we can work, I can work with Rob to come up with some language and then we can give you uh, the parameters of what I think we might want in a, in a permit that would be acceptable both to Ari and to the board.
Yeah, that's fine. And Richard, you look like you want to weigh in on this?
Well, just to answer Charles's question, we absolutely can legislate decibel levels. They do it much to the annoyance of some racers, race car drivers I know in Lime Rock where we have to wait for unmuffled days to test our cars. So you can work that in, be it through a permit, uh, that Terry's suggesting. But it sounds like the board, uh, is viewing this concept favorably. So I would imagine that, uh, we can arrive at something that's workable, uh, for the applicant.
Richard, would you have any idea how we would come up with a decibel level coming out of the Lafayette that would not be so loud that it would go inside the house with its windows and doors shut?
The only way you could do that is to measure it with devices that perform.
Engineer would do that?
Say that, I'm sorry?
There, an audio engineer, is that who does that?
But if we're not talking about.
When do you, when do you do it? I mean, are you doing, you know, it? So, and, and it, it, it's from the point of where, I think Richard said this, I missed where you hear it. Um, you know, taking the measurement on the sidewalk in front doesn't help. So, I, you know, I, and it, you know, I don't think um, Ari or Terry are looking necessarily on that to go down that road. I don't know that we need to. I do think, you know, that Terry and I, and, you know, we can maybe come up with something that's, uh, that's acceptable. You know, the exceptions are, when you read them, are temporary, you know, church bells or chimes, right? That's not a constant thing. Uh, lawn mowers between certain hours, you know, so every, all of the exceptions, you know, kind of have baked in a, a, a limitation, a time limitation. So, um, you know, I think if we can come up with something that, you know, uh, everybody can live with, that's probably the best way to go.
I really want to find something that we can all live with because I think the project is phenomenal.
Thank you, thank you for saying.
I think, I think it's a fantastic project too.
Uh, if I could just add my thoughts on where I would be comfortable and, and going through is if you were to make an exception after hearing your thoughts, really thinking through what other venues are doing. Uh, and I appreciate all of that input, uh, something with an exception from 10:00 PM to 1:00 AM would be enough for me to do whatever I could possibly think inside the space. And that, uh, for me, I, I like, I like that, uh, over chopping up the calendar of, you know, these days are 11, these days are 11:30, these are, uh, because again, I don't know what I'm going to be doing. And, and there, there may be more opportunities for us to do great things in there that I would, I wouldn't otherwise be able to if I, if I
Want to chime in on something with, with sound. So, um, about a year, two years ago, uh, you know, it was before COVID, I guess it was at least two years ago. I saw Pat Benatar at the Bergen Pack, okay? Now whoever her sound people were, they brought in a sound system that was far, far, far too loud for that venue and it was actually painfully loud. So, I mean, I think that obviously you don't want to have a situation where it's painfully loud for the people inside because obviously that's also going to possibly create a nuisance outside. But I think if the sound inside is a normal rock concert or whatever the case may be and not so painful that you're, you know, you, you're in pain. Uh, you know, I, I have a feeling with a building as old as the Lafayette with very thick, you know, it's, it's, it's not like, uh, plaster, it's not like sheet rock or something. It's, it's like plasterboard or, you know, whatever it is. I don't know enough about construction, but it's, it's probably going to keep most of the sound in, I would think. And I would, my, just my suggestion is, you know, there's, there's, you know, just, just get a band like a friends or something that are into playing and say, here, play for, play for an hour and let me see what it sounds like outside the building, you know, and, and, and you'll get a sense of, you know, how loud it is inside versus outside. I have a feeling you won't hear a damn thing. That's my suspicion.
You might get vibrations.
Yeah.
That you may, you may hear like a, a vibration or humming and is that a sound? Is it not a sound? Uh, I totally agree with you that if I could be in a room and not have my, my, uh, ears blown out, uh, you know, that's going to be the kind of concert that I want to be sitting in that it would not be as loud outside as what you're experiencing inside the room. We are a venue that has no windows except for the front and the lobby spaces, which are the only areas where we're going to have the, uh, windows. Uh, so the sound in all likelihood is going to be contained. But the reason why we're here is, is I, I, I don't want to be put in a position where I'm spending a lot of money, uh, additionally from what we already have contributed into the building. And, and leave it, leave myself out there for, for, uh, some type of of series of violations or chronic violations because I, I've already built this and now I have to, I have to operate it.
Well, I, I would suggest that in building it, um, you may not know exactly what you're going to be doing as far as your events. But you certainly know what you're about to spend and you need to factor into that adequate soundproofing. And I think that if the board has the opportunity and certainly the planning board would to see what you're putting into this thing and what effort you're making to contain the sound within the structure. Um, I think in good faith, uh, they would have to appreciate that. And, uh, I'm not saying look the other way, but certainly seriously consider favorably uh, your application, uh, for your special events.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that comment. I, there, there are things that we are going to touch with this renovation and there's a lot. Uh, there are things that we are not going to touch, including the, the architectural plaster walls, et cetera, of the building. Those aren't areas that I, that I am looking to open up and create extra insulation. I'm not going to be insulating the roof. So, I, I'm, I'm an open book. Uh, this is something that I want to do. Uh, soundproofing the building, uh, more than what it already is. And again, we don't really know i- if it's, if it's really that bad to begin with, uh, it's a cost that I'm, I'm really not willing to, you know, to consider. It's, it's substantial already and I'm not going to hear, you know, I, I, I can't, uh, sit here and tell you that I'm going to give it a shot and make it work and, and not put much toward it because knowing the building as I know it, I, I, I really can't start insulating walls that are already closed up. And from the look and beauty and majesty of the, of the building, I can't start putting egg cardins everywhere as well to, to keep the sound from.
I think. I'm sorry. Let us, let us start with, um, discussing it, Mr. Magrino, uh, Mr. Rice. See what we can come up with. Maybe there's, uh, you know, something that we can amend in the code and at the same time, Mr. Ben Moshe. You know, when, when we look at the building in, in its totality, it, it sounds, it sounds like a great, uh, um, undertaking. And at the same time, I don't think we even know if the sound is going to penetrate outside the building.
Correct.
So, let's, let's start off slow. We'll work our way into it, but at the me, in the meantime, Mr. Magrino and Mr. Rice, have your discussion. Uh, Mr. Ben Moshe, you can, you know, continue on, uh, looking at the options and, uh, I think we will be able to come to a compromise.
I think we get a sense of the board and I think I, I see a way through this. So I think Mr. Grino, Magrino and I can, uh, put something together for the board.
Excellent.
Great, alright.
Thank you, thank you, Ari.
You all, thank you all for your time.
And thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. It sounds great.
Chief Coffer, Suffolk Fire Department.
Good evening. How's everybody?
Good, how are you, Jeremy?
Hi, Jeremy. It's been, uh, another busy couple of weeks for us in the fire department. We responded to, uh, two more structural fires since the last meeting. Uh, one was a supermarket in Muncie and then one that everybody knows about on Riverside Drive. Um, I don't really have much on the agenda tonight. Um, I had sent Amy an email late. I don't know if it made it to the agenda, but she had responded that it, it possibly would. And that is for the preliminary report for the LoSAP program. I don't know if everybody was able to, uh, receive the materials for that.
Yes, everyone has it.
So basically we're just looking for approval to, uh, post the preliminary report.
Okay. Okay. So you're going to want that authorization on today or on Monday?
On Monday.
Okay.
Okay. And that's, uh, that's, that's about it unless anybody has any questions for me.
Oh, great job on Riverside Drive. Sorry for the, for the homeowner, but, uh, raging inferno on a, on a horrible day, but once again, you guys did a fantastic job and I thank that Suffolk Volunteer Fire Department. Can't thank them enough.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
As well, myself.
Jeremy, I have one question for you.
Sure.
What exactly is that awards program? It seems to be related to fireman's pension or something?
So, as you know, we're, we're not paid. We are a hundred percent volunteer. The, uh, program is the length of service um, program and it, uh, it enables the members after a certain period of time, which I believe starts at 25 years, they collect a minimum or a minimal amount of money each month as a sort of pension, I guess you could say.
Okay, I got you.
All right, all right, Jeremy. Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, I just want to skip over to to, let's see, where am I? 9A, 50 Lafayette Avenue for their zone change petition. Does the board mind? Okay. Mr. Magrino.
Uh, okay, so, uh, we received an application, um, if you recall, the, uh, applicant came in last month, uh, to discuss what he was looking to do. Uh, I think all the board members have the petition. Um, they, in essence, they are asking for to create a new zone in a village called TDD CB. So it would be a specific, you know, transit oriented development, if you will, for the CB district. And they provided a proposed, um, bulk table and use table of what's permitted and, um, I will turn it over to the applicant uh, in a moment to discuss, but, um, in terms of, um, procedure, uh, this is, uh, a workshop. They have made the petition. It's up to the board to decide how they want to go with the petition, either, uh, accept it and, and put a public hearing on. Um, the board's not required to. We can, the board can review the petition and make a determination to um, ask for some, uh, perhaps changes or, or give it a hearing as is, but, um, you know, uh, once the board accepts the petition and says, okay, we're going to set a public hearing, which I believe will be what they are asking for tonight. If you were inclined to do that, we would set the public hearing at Monday's meeting for April. Um, and, uh, it would get, uh, distributed to county planning, the, uh, village planning board, uh, and our own planner, uh, for a review and comment uh, before the, the public hearing and then you'd have the public hearing on. So tonight is, is really just kind of an introduction into the petition. And that's where we're at procedurally. So before I turn it over, does anybody have any questions on that aspect of it?
Do they have all the paperwork like the, uh, environmental and all that? Is that back or?
I believe, well, they, they filled out the, uh, yeah, the full, uh, environmental assessment form. I understand we just got it, uh, late this afternoon. So, again, none of that has to be necessarily 100% complete tonight. Um, but, you know, for certainly setting the public hearing on Monday, we would have to, you know, take a look and make sure.
Yeah, I.
Everything's in order.
Are we going to get the opportunity to look at it and read it or? I mean, I, I, I would.
Rob, was it, it wasn't distributed? Rob, did, did we distribute it to the board?
Yes, I believe the board has it, right? Everybody received a copy, right?
And this is their plan that they brought to the board the last time with, I think, 18 units and wanting 17 parking spots from Lot B.
Yes, the same plan. So this is the same plan I believe they're presenting. Is that correct?
I believe so. So I, if, if you're ready, I'll, I'll turn it over to their, the applicant and their counsel.
Okay.
Jim and, uh, Ari, I'm asking you to unmute.
I think we can put it off to Monday night. I think it's fine right now. We have the information.
Well, I think they, let the, let the, um, do we have any questions in regards to the application, the way it stands now? The way we have received it?
I don't really know what that question means, Ed. Do we agree with it or do we?
In regards to the application as is?
Yes.
Okay.
So do you want to let the applicant and their attorney at least make a, you know, a presentation so you know what they're asking for?
I, I just don't think we're ready for a public hearing just yet, but.
No, this isn't a public hearing. This is just kind of explain what they've submitted and then you can decide, you know, Monday, if you want to set it for a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, Rob.
Mr. Ari or Jim, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, uh, yeah, this is, uh, Jim Locata, attorney for the applicant. Um, yes, we proposed a petition for, uh, 18, um, residential units and 1,500 square feet of retail space on the first floor with, uh, 17 parking spaces, uh, 10 parking spaces are on site uh, with, uh, requesting 17 parking spaces to be purchased at municipal Suffolk municipal lots. Um, in regard to the environmental, we did file the petition, I believe, yesterday. But I believe that the only thing missing from the petition was the full environmental assessment form, which I know was filed with the village this afternoon, at least, uh, through my office by email. And, um, the applicant was going to drop off 10 additional copies to the village clerk for distribution for the board members. So, uh, as far as the applicant is concerned, we're just, we're technically 100% complete with our petition. I'm not talking about the content. I'm just talking about, um, the, the petition itself. And we're prepared, uh, Mr. Afghang and I are prepared to answer any questions or, uh, that you might have regarding the petition. And as Mr. Magrino said, we are requesting that, uh, the matter be placed on Monday's agenda for the ultimate, uh, declination towards a public hearing uh, at your April meeting. Rob, are we, uh, going forward with the proposed RFP for a comprehensive plan to commence at, on Monday?
Uh, well, the board already voted on it. I'm in, just about finished preparing it and I was going to circulate it to, uh, uh, Steve Conley and, uh, the mayor and, uh, and the board if it wants to see it, but just, and, uh, I'm sorry, Mike Janito, um, for comment and changes and things of that nature. And then we would, we're authorized to submit. So it will be submitted. I want to say submitted, published, um, hoping within the next week. So there's no further action that the board has to take with respect to that.
In your opinion, that comprehensive plan, how long do we have to wait before we get it?
You mean a final comprehensive plan?
Is it six months from now, nine months from now?
It could take, it could take as long as a year. Uh, you know, because there's going to be hearings, there's going to be, uh, you know, I, I, I would, I would say a year, up to a year.
Okay.
If not longer. But from now, I mean, you know, by the time we get the RFP and the, you know, everything in, but, you know, it will take a while. You know, because they, there, there's hearings, there's workshops, you know, if you want to speed it along, it could, I guess, depends on what the, um, you know, planner says, but, you know, there are public hearings and, you know, if there's revisions to the code necessary, you know, it could take a little while.
Thanks, Rob.
Are there any modifications that the board would like to see to this petition? Are there any modifications that the board would like to see to this petition? Is there any discussion on the petition?
Yes, I don't think there's enough parking and I think it's too big.
Do you have any suggestions?
Point five parking spots. Is is not okay. And and we, we brought that up at the last workshop. So, um.
And they're just coming back with the same thing that we said was too big. You know, I, I would like a project to happen there. I would like the parking for the apartments to happen on the lot. And, you know, I hope that it could be profitable for you to build the property. And park all the cars there. I would think that's a store and eight units.
A store and eight units from a store and eighteen, okay?
I'm, I'm okay with the size of eighteen units, I, I'm not okay with the parking situation either, which I I think I was only brought up. That that was my big sticking issue is the parking and that I think something needs to be done. Uh, because even though we have spots right now to sell, uh, I know a year and a half ago. Uh, we were looking to purchase an Avon property for three million dollars just to uh get parking spots. Because at least at the time, we were oversold on the spots that were available to sell. So granted, things have changed with COVID, but who knows what's gonna change again, once, once everyone's vaccinated and can go. Back to work, so to speak, so we, it's it's a big mystery in the future, what's gonna be necessary for village parking. But I know that we had a big shortage a year and a half ago, and it, so it concerns me uh to potentially give up seventeen spots. In the lot, uh, the B lot or some other lot or whatever, uh, you know, and I I would rather personally, again, I have no issue with with eighteen units. But I have an issue uh with not having sufficient parking for them.
So if they were to scale down a portion of the, whatever the scaling down may be. And scaling down the number of parking spots they that they need off site. Would that be something the board would consider?
I think so, I I mean, I I would rather, I mean, given my draw is, I I'm okay with the eighteen units, I'd rather just see like a. You know, underground parking or whatever the case may be, but I I think other board members have expressed interest that eighteen's too many, so I I'm. I'm not trying to push something on anybody.
I I don't think eighteen is too many because it's eighteen, I think eighteen is too many. Because they can't park for eighteen. And they could work for eight.
So if if if. So I know, I know that I I asked this question last, last month, uh, you know, and basically was told it would be too too expensive to build underground. Uh, to do parking, but if if they were to do that, Charles, uh, Mister Brown, would would that be, would the eighteen units be acceptable to you? If they had like sufficient spots underground?
It's too tall.
It's also taller, that's. It's no taller than the other, the Sushi Bada building, right?
If you looked down the street, you're gonna have zigzag, 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 more so than any other.
This is, this is a chance to spur once again development in our downtown business district, I'm not, I'm not saying. Eighteen, fourteen, seventy-five feet high, I'm saying, I'm looking at the overall big picture on economic development and and rebuilding the villages suffering. In the most proper and and responsible manner, if we can overcome the height. If it is, if it is too tall, is there a way to bring it down um a story?
I I I think, Mister Mayor, I could tell, first of all, my sympathies to Mister Barone, I'm very sorry for your loss. Um, I think that um, there are certain fixed costs and I have dug in, I didn't ignore the last meeting, I have done a lot of work. And dug into construction costs and really. In speaking with um with my attorney to prepare for the meeting, he asked me with all his experience, he said, well, you know. What's the smallest project that makes sense and that I, I made the mistake of actually running numbers for what this building's gonna cost to build. And really, quite frankly, I'm not sure if it makes sense at any size, but I think that there are certain fixed costs, so foundation costs are fixed. Elevator costs are fixed, um, generally speaking, I mean, an extra stop costs a little bit more for the door on the top floor. Uh, staircases, mechanical systems, all the big costs of building an a a downtown apartment building. Are the same whether it's, you know, twelve units or eighteen units. So just the the way that that plays out from a financial perspective, it's very difficult to reduce the size of this building. Um, and I understand the issue with the parking, but I, but I wanna suggest that. Um, there are so many different ways that people get around now. Uh, this is nine one bedroom apartments and nine two bedroom apartments, right? Between, I I can tell you, my office, we've got fifty people, oh, no, forty-eight people here and. Anyone under the age of thirty, they really couldn't care less about cars, they just don't care, they don't have them, they don't use them. They, they, well, they get a lot of delivery, they take Ubers, a lot of people walk, they just don't, they don't, they live in areas that where it's not required. Uh, I just think that being so close to so many different regional and uh and local bus lines, not to mention, of course, the train. Uber and car sharing and everything else, um. I just can't imagine that many people in a two bedroom apartment are gonna have two cars, now they might, and I know that that's, that's a risk we're gonna take. But I do think that in a village of over ten thousand people. You know, really worrying so much about seventeen spots. Um, and eighteen apartments, to me, this seems a little bit out of scale from a planning perspective. This is a relatively small project for a downtown project, but it still has the expenses of being an urban infill job. Uh, we have to build non-combustible uh at the current size, we have to build mobility impaired, of course, so elevators, et cetera. So it's just, it's just very expensive and. I don't want anyone to think that this is a project that's changing, you know, that's not gonna change my life per se, this is more of like, almost like a passion project. We started with with Sushi Bada, we went on to Java Love. I think that more people in the downtown make sense to support the businesses, hearing the first Ari, which is the first time I ever got to say that in a meeting. Hearing the first Ari talk about his project, more people in the downtown that might go to his venue, we see it as being in addition to the downtown. And it really is eighteen apartments, right, we're talking about right now, there's over forty-five hundred households in southern. It's eighteen apartments, it's eighteen households, hopefully are voting for the school budget, eighteen people that are going to the restaurant. And sure, we have to figure out seventeen cars, uh, but that's worst case scenario, that's if everybody in the building has an average of one and a half cars. Right, so that's everybody in the one bedroom apartments has a car and everybody in the two bedroom apartments has two cars. That's the only time we're gonna need seventeen cars offsite, cuz it's nine nine.
Right.
So now, and as far as the height is concerned, it is just roughly about the same height from a linear feet perspective as my office building that we built. It's shorter than um than Park Place and it's shorter than the back of um of the Goldstein Building, the Sheldon. Um. But, all that being said, if to move this job forward. Um, we had to do something like set a terrace at the sixth floor, in other words, have five stories at the street. And maybe set the sixth floor back to give it a lower line at the street, cutting off two apartments, that's something we could look at doing. Uh, but really, any sort of sizable cut, uh, like's been requested, this really doesn't make it at all financially feasible and um. And trust me, I've been on the other side of this forever, right, I'm an architect for twenty-two years, so I've heard developers all over the place cry about it not being feasible. This is one of my first times being a developer besides for Java and my my office building. It really isn't, like, it doesn't make sense, if you think about houses around here sell, and you could look comps of houses, right? Houses around here, here sell for an average of twenty, two hundred and twenty dollars to two hundred and thirty dollars a square foot. Right, that's average comps for selling a home. A non-combustible building with an elevator is gonna cost two hundred and twenty-five dollars a foot to build. So, at some point, I mean, not that I'm selling it, I'm not selling condos, we're planning on doing a rental. But at some point, it just isn't accretive, it doesn't make any sense to build a building if it's gonna be um so small. And and we're also okay with the commercial zoning, if we needed to wait, we could wait to see if a group of doctors, hopefully one day comes to us. And says, build me a two-story office building that's as of right, I think you all know a four-story office building as of right. You know, requires nothing but site plan approval, it's, there's no zoning changes required for that, a four-story office building is almost as tall as the six-story apartment building. So that's okay too, so I just wanted you all to know that, we just wanted to show you our idea, it's what we hope you will accept. It's something I want to do, I want to build this apartment building, I, with the store at the bottom, I do think that. It would be a great addition to the downtown where, you know, I live in Montebello, but where I work and I am, you guys, I'm sure, see me, I'm here. Pretty much fourteen hours a day walking around, me is for lunch, Java for coffee and back to the office. Um, I wanna do it, but really, it's up to you all, it's up to you guys to say whether or not you want a new building there that has. Um, you know, sixteen to eighteen apartments and we have to deal with finding seventeen spots in the B lot. I I I park in the B lot myself, um, it's not full, and I know, Mister Al, but I know that post-COVID. I almost hope it is full again, right, I want it to be full, it means people are taking the train and everyone's going to work, and that's what we all want. Uh, I do think that there's a possibility for re-striping that lot to get more spots. I also think that people wouldn't mind if they're only driving on the weekend, parking by the ball fields. I don't think that should be out of the question either, if someone lived in this building, I don't think they would mind parking by the ball fields, it's a couple of blocks. Um, I I'm not saying people busy in the downtown, but I think that if if you guys would sell me those spots. Down there and some of those lots are pretty empty most of the time, or at the end of Lafayette. By the old train station, you know, down down by the insurance agency, yeah, I don't, I don't think these lots, these spaces have to be in the B lot, if that's the most desirable space. Because, and I'm saying that because I'm not convinced everyone's been coming with a car, and does not, I think people are gonna come with one car. Some people in the one bedroom apartment are gonna have no cars, they'll have two bikes, right?
So, have you asked uh the Goldstein property how many cars that they have?
Because there's. They actually have, they have a lot of cars.
Right, and they said that there wasn't gonna be any cars either.
I don't, I I'm not sure, I wasn't there when, for their presentation. Okay, um, that's fine, like I, like I said, trustee, I think it's fine, I think that. If you all decide that it's not the right project for the site, I'm actually okay with it, it's fine, it's not a big deal, I think that. I I think it's a good project for suffering, using my experience as a planner and architect for so many years. I do agree with some people on this board that now is the time to move suffering forward, I think downtowns have a chance of literally dying. If you don't do that, right, and the, and the first step, and I've been involved in, you know, in in Harlem, in the Bronx, in in Williamsburg and in Bushwick. Uh, in Astoria and all these different areas, all these redevelopments, I mean, we design over twenty buildings a year here, um, and. And it's always the same thing, people have to be first, right, you're not gonna get a downtown to revitalize with. Uh, with a retail project, you need feet, you need feet on the street, right, you need people walking by, that's what's gonna attract businesses. Desirable businesses that we want, and we just need more people, and I think it's a great project for the site, but I understand if you, if you all don't.
So with twenty buildings of a year of experience, Mister Afghang, that's what, that's what you have. And Williamsburg and Bushwick and Queens and it's, it's something that you, you, you see on a daily basis. We see the need to spur economic development and growth here in the, in the villages suffering. I think we can overcome the seventeen parking spaces in one way, shape or form. We have numerous lots throughout the village, Co- COVID, as everybody knows, our parking has been down roughly sixty to seventy percent. Will it come back to the hundred percent level? That's the unknown, I don't think it will, reconfiguring the parking lot, the B lot. Um, to, to stripe that lot differently, we have already obtained grant money to repave that lot. At the same time, we will re-stripe it, increasing the number of vehicles that are able to park in that spot. Another point is that if it comes to seventeen spots, seventeen, seventeen spots of additional revenue to the village. With increased tax revenue, water and sewer and walk, more walkability down in the downtown for our restaurants and retail outlets is. Is just a plus for the villages suffering.
Mayor, I agree with you, I think that uh this is a real plus for the village, and as for the parking, as Ari said. You know, he's open to uh. But getting spaces in other areas, he mentioned all those other areas, besides that. Um, they're open to uh. Reducing, making the building a little smaller, requiring less parking spaces. And finally, I did hear about the future of our world, which is so true, like Ari said, because. The future of our world is gonna be uh where you call up an Uber or even even call up a remote car in five, ten years from now. And you won't need a car, that happens to be the future of the driving world, cuz it's getting so driverless and so modern. So I think we should work hard to try to make this project happen.
I agree, I I would like to see the project happen myself uh as well, like I said, I, I mean, I guess if it has less units and. Less need for parking, that's a good thing.
I mean, we have, we, there, there is, there is, oh, there are over a thousand parking spots of inventory throughout the village. We're talking about. One percent, just about one percent.
I understand that, um, Ed, but not long ago, you were gonna buy. Three million dollar parking lot, and now we're saying, let's load up our parking lot. I I don't, COVID will be over one day, and I do think that we'll have seventy percent parking back. I think seventy percent of people will come back, I sure wish I had a swivel chair, darn it, um, but. Um. And we were so out of parking that we didn't know what to do with ourselves. So, a sticking point is parking for us because we almost bought a parking lot for three million dollars.
That's it, that's, that's history, we're moving forward, we're in a different world now with the pandemic, with the difference in, in the commuting. Um, styles that people have, working from home, there are a host of things with parking that have changed within the last year and a half. This is going to spur once again, his success with his building seventy-eight and Sushi Bada. Spurred growth and economic development in the villages suffering, this too alone will spur additional growth. And revenue stream to the villages suffering, even including some parking. But it's going to build on our retail and our restaurants at the same time. This is something that the village residents, that people that I know, that are downsizing, that are looking for. Market rate affordable, walkable apartments in the villages suffering in Rockland County. You see it throughout Rockland County, you see it throughout Bergen County, you see it throughout N- New York City. These are things that we have to consider, we cannot be stalled in the eighties and the nineties, we have to move forward. That's.
Do we have any kind of?
My opinion, that.
Do we have any kind of idea, you know, if such a building is built to the specifications that Mister Afghang would like to do? Uh, how much tax revenue would that bring to the village, like, how would that help uh with our budgets and whatnot, roughly?
I don't have the exact numbers on it, but definitely, it's going to impact our tax rolls, is going, it's going to be additional. Uh, an additional revenue stream and real estate property, real property taxes, water revenue and sewer rents. And parking revenue.
Right.
And well, the school taxes, of course, these are the things that we're looking for to to, so the, the, the taxpayer isn't burdened.
Yeah, well, like I said, I I I have no problem with the number of units, really, but.
I think it's something that, you know, the request for a public hearing and and let the public hear about it. I don't see anything wrong with that.
I would like uh Ari to work with the mayor to try to come back in the future with uh some definite offerings of where. People could park their cars in other spaces like you had mentioned, Ari, and at the hearing on Monday and in the future, you know, really show the public that. You could uh have spaces for your tenants.
That's a great, that's a great idea, Mister Solomon.
I don't like the idea of people building downtown and not accommodating parking on site. We have other projects in the works and they accommodate their parking on site, and that's the model that I like.
Okay.
I certainly understand that, but I think there has to be, the reason why we named the district in our draft as we did. There has to be a little bit of a different consideration for the actual spine of downtown for that C B, because there just aren't any lots. There's no lots downtown where you can leave side yards and do open parking and basement parking and and subgrade parking structured is just too expensive. If I had four acres and I could do a big parking lot and a building in the middle and yards, of course, but downtown is just different, it's different in this. If if we wanna see development downtown, as I said, I'm not assuming everybody does, but for people who do wanna see development downtown on Lafayette Avenue. The idea of onsite parking is maybe difficult for any project, and that goes for restaurants, goes for retail, uh, that goes for residential even more so. And that goes for restaurants, goes for retail, uh, that goes for residential even more so. It's very, very
Even, even though I think this project um, is too big, it does not accommodate its parking on site, there's no reason that the public can't weigh in on it.
I agree with that, Charlie.
Me as well. So I think we should put it on Monday to, for, uh, to make a public hearing for the following, you know, for April.
Okay.
Okay.
Does anyone have anything further?
I just have a comment for, uh, Ari and, and Jim. The, uh, in your use, uh, column, uh, you list the accessory uses, uh, one, two, three, four and five in the CB under accessory. You know, that may either go and permitted or, or tidy up that language a little bit. That's just something to look at. Also, do you have, um, maybe some architecturals or rough, you know, architecturals or something, uh, that shows a little bit, this really looks more like a kind of a, uh, survey layout, so to speak. I don't know if you have something that maybe shows a little more, you would know better than I, or you know, a something that, um, so people can get a feel for what it's going to look like.
Certainly, yeah, we have, we have elevations and some renderings that we could send over.
Right. I think that would be helpful for, so that when everybody's reviewing it, they know exactly what you're asking for.
But Mr. McGrino, just so you know, the, the thought process of the use as accessory, because we put up a note that said ground floor only.
Right.
Because this really is the first zone in suffering that would allow that mix. I know when TDD was written in the definition of TDD, it said it would allow, but then there's, there's no mix in the chart. So I didn't really know how to do that.
Right. That's something we could work on. What I'm saying is either you put it over in permitted under the mixed or just the wording under accessory. It's okay if you want to call them accessory. But they're not accessory in the CB. Like we just, if you leave it in that column, that's fine, but you just have to work on the language.
Oh, I understand what you mean. Okay. They're primary in the CB, but they're accessory in the CB TD.
Okay, right. We could talk about that offline before, uh,
Thank you.
You need, Rob, um, well, you need us to deliver just hard copies to you? Is that how you want it of the, uh, elevations and, uh, of the
Yeah. Yeah. If you could submit them to the village clerk, you know, to be included, because this, again, this is going to be circulated. Uh, as I said, to county planning, obviously all the board members. Um, we'd like an electronic format so it could be posted on the, on the website so that the public can view it. So both forms would be, uh, requested.
Okay. Will, will you need us to attend Monday, uh, the village board meeting or? I, I'm free if it's up to you.
What's that?
I said I'm free. If, if Ari and I are free, if it's up to you, do you need us to be there Monday?
Well, look, I'll, the, the board, I'll be preparing resolutions for the board to vote on. So, you know, I leave it to you. The public may comment just on that vote. I don't know.
So you, so you'd like us to attend?
It probably behooves you to attend, Jim.
Okay. No problem. Just looking for a little guidance. That's all.
You got it.
That's good. Okay. We're, we're, we're all clear?
Thank you, everybody.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Night. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, the tree committee. Miss Sted, are you available?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. Hi. So, um, hope everyone enjoy this beautiful spring-like coming day. So, okay, so I just wanted to go over, Charles, are you, um, on the call? Basically, uh, Charles unfortunately had been out of the, um, past two meetings due to sick leave. Hope that he's feeling better and everything as well. And I had sent him the minutes of the past two meetings and the overview of the consensus that the tree committee board had wanted to, um, move forward with a entire, um, risk mitigation tree survey for the village. So Charles is on the call?
Yeah, yes, I
Okay. So are we all in agreement? The board seemed to be in favor of this. It's a more systematic, logical way to move forward. It seems we have enough money in the budget.
Well, um, just a little, just for clarity, are you saying to do a tree inventory for the entire village? You, you just mentioned about having this, uh, doing a, um, assessment and mitigation. Uh, there's two, two different things. So what, what would you want to prefer? What, what is your preference? And what is the, the, uh, the committee like to proceed with?
Um, okay. So you're throwing me a little bit of a curve here as far as the difference. Um, it seemed to me that the DB Resource Group that had pulled together, um, just an off, you know, a cuff type of an inventory. It seemed very similar to the Tremis uh, risk mitigation report. So maybe you and I could compare the two?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, because the, um, a, um, the tree inventory is going to be very limited. It's going to essentially identify the location, the species, um, the caliber, um, and so on, so forth. It doesn't address the, um, you go into the, um, um, you do a full assessment and, um, what the appropriate mitigation would be. So, um, you know, that's a little bit more involved. And of course, the follow-up mitigation, um, is costly. So, you know, we would need to break it up into phases so that we could, um, um, you know, appropriately, um, you know, handle it, uh, over a, a, you know, it could be a couple of years, two or three, or maybe even four year period possibly, depending on the cost. With the last, uh, the last mitigation, uh, actually the first round of, um, mitigation that we did was in around the thirty thousand dollar range. So, um, and that was for like about eighty-five, eighty-six trees.
Correct.
So it really would come down to, uh, the amount of, um, funds that we would have and, um, you know, would, if in fact you want to do an inventory or an assessment. So there are, there is a difference and there's a cost difference. And of course, you got to consider the mitigation to follow, which is, uh, gets pretty costly.
Okay. Well, DB Resource Group sent me, um, the full outline of what they would do for the thirteen thousand five hundred uh, dollars for three thousand trees, including the park trees and shrubs. Let me send that over to you. And again, let's assess it. We do have the, uh, Bartlett from previous, just the eighty-five trees. And maybe you could just, um, uh, you know, we could put out an RFP, uh, based on what the requirements would be. So I'll work with you if you're available. And I'll send you the DB Resource, um, full assessment. It was quite extensive. And then let's decide. We have time. Um, the assessment doesn't have to be, um, there's no consideration as, um, regarding the leafing of the trees, you know, the leaf out of the trees, because the assessment can be done at any time. So I think it's best if we work together and really assess what we're looking to achieve. And, you know, move forward that way.
That sounds great. I think that's perfect that you and Charles meet and discuss and compare the, uh,
Right.
the assessment, the tree inventory and the risk mitigation and then
Right.
really, then that will be the final and then we can make a decision.
Right. And we're going to, uh, we have a meeting scheduled for March. Um, the third week in March. And so we can bring the whole committee into it. Charles and I can do some work together. Uh, pre, um, you know, pre the meeting. So we can put it out and, you know, definitely, um, you know more, you know, I'm learning. And there's a lot to learn, but you do, uh, you're bringing out a good point, Charles. Okay?
Thank you.
We're good. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Charles. Okay. Thank you. Next up, culture and recreation, Ms. Mills.
Good evening, everybody. How is everybody doing?
Oh, my God.
All right. So a couple of things that we have coming up. I'm sorry, as soon as I got, um, decided to park. So, um, our Facebook updates have been going well and are constant contacts. Uh, we worked well with the DBW Department today. There was actually a water main break in the village and we were working together to make sure we got the word out to residents about that. So that was, um, something that was happening today. And we have Friday emails going out every Friday for constant contact. Our list, again, as I've said before, keeps growing. So we keep getting a lot of people that are interested in learning about news and information from the village. Uh, we have a lot of organizations that are jumping in and asking to get information out. Um, one of the recent ones was RCC, they're having a job fair coming up. And, you know, something like that is very worthwhile for the community. So we're encouraging people to reach out to us, see if there's anything that wants, that they would like to go in our newsletter. So it would benefit residents as well. So Constant Contact is a great resource for us to get the word out, uh, to, to residents and to people in the county. Uh, we have our chair exercise classes on Mondays and Wednesdays at ten. We have our yoga classes on Tuesdays and Thursdays at ten. And then we've got yoga on Zoom on Fridays at ten AM. Uh, we have youth art month. For those of you that don't know, the month of March is youth art month, month. So we're working with the schools, with the art teachers on projects that we'd be able to work on with students. So that's Yep. So that's something exciting.
Is it with this new building?
We have a girl scout
Hold on, Sandy. Mrs. Sted, if you could mute yourself.
I'll mute her.
Thank you.
I don't have that power.
Yeah.
Ed, do you?
No. Rob, Mr.
Yeah, I'm looking.
Sandy.
I can't find her.
Can she hear us? We'll just ask her
Oh, yeah.
to be quiet.
Okay.
She doesn't have phone on.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Sorry. Uh, Mayor, the girl scout, you're working with the girl scout troop on a project for girl empowerment. I know you had a Zoom class the other day with them and it seemed to have worked very well. And they're very excited on working with the village on working on a future project. So more details to come about that. Um, we had bingo this afternoon. We had senior, senior bingo. It was a fantastic afternoon and, you know, we're making every effort and every, um, everything possible to do events with social distancing, with sanitizing, with cleaning, with making sure that the center is clear and ready for everybody. Today was a fantastic example of that. We had seniors there for about two hours. They were thrilled to be there, the smiles on everyone's faces, which I couldn't see because of the mask. So we did wear masks. But the, uh, the, you know, the comments that we got were people were thrilled to start doing events like this. So that was our, our day of bingo. Uh, we have another one coming up on Friday, March nineteenth. That word will start to get out. Um, our events are RSVP. So we don't have people just show up. We have a number that we cap it out. So people, um, are able to come and still be able to be socially distant. We have the egg hunt coming up on Saturday, March twenty-seventh. And with that, every year we have a coloring contest. So that has been getting out too. Again, we always try to encourage events for kids. And the coloring contest is a great way for kids to do something at home. Send us the, uh, coloring contests and they've always enjoyed that. We get nice, um, photos and pictures from the kids for the coloring contest. Um, our next, one of our, another event is Keep Rockin' Beautiful, which will be working with Arbor Day. Uh, we'll have that on Saturday, May first. We typically do Keep Rockin' Beautiful the day after Arbor Day, which is the last Friday in April. So this year, the Keep Rockin' Beautiful Arbor Day celebration will be on May first. Uh, this is something that we learned from doing Keep Rockin' Beautiful late in the game last year. Uh, we were able to do everything socially distant. We had, you know, one leader pick up the supplies, the, the students and the scouts and the residents were able to do everything in different groups and not um, stay together, but social distance and to clean up the community, we can't, we can't beat that. So we're really happy to continue with Keep Rockin' Beautiful. Uh, we have, uh, there's a food donation box. Um, there's something, we sent out something out on Facebook the other day. Food, food donation box by Assemblyman Mike Muller. Uh, he's collecting food. So we are able to, um, we were able to put a table outside. If anyone is interested, please stop by Village Hall and you can drop off food. You don't need to go in the building. You can just drop it off right outside the building.
Every day, Kathy, every day I pass, because you know, that's part of my walking loop. Every day it's packed with food. Cause I go early in the morning, it's empty. And then I go late at night and I'm like, wow, that's amazing.
It is. People in the village are always very, very generous.
And I think people see it and they just, cause I, I just think now I, when I take the dog for a walk, I just bring something with me and drop it.
Ah, you're the one that's getting everything in there. Good job, Jack.
No, 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 no. I, I, I got, I had a ninety-nine pound dog. There's only so much I can carry besides him.
Very nice. People have been very generous, dropping food off. So please
It is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you for those that have been donating. Uh, and then that's it for the events. We have, um, I don't know if, Mayor, if you want me to get into the surplus items? We've got some surplus items. We've been doing some spring cleaning. And we have some things that we would like to get rid of instead of just throwing out, we're going to do surplus for them. Um, and then donation of items. We have a couple of items in the community center that we deem to be useful for somebody else, but just taking up space for us. So there's speakers from the community center. They're huge. It's, you know, the old way of having music and speakers. They're, they're tremendous. I, we were talking with Rob's music. They could use them if we can donate to them. Um, and then we have a bingo board, which I did find out history from it. I was speaking, Mayor, with you today about it. So I guess the American, if I can get this right, the American Legion donated bingo boards to the VFW.
Yes.
W donated that bingo board to the village. And now we have two bingo boards. So if we can donate that bingo board back, that would be a nice donation for the American Legion. So like to do that for them and for us to be able to free up space in the loft. So that's my proposal is to donate those two items, one to Rob's music and one to the community. To the American Legion.
So that would all have to be declared surplus, Kathy. So we'll have to put together a resolution indicating those items and declaring, and the board declaring them surplus.
Right. Okay.
I have a question actually about speakers. I presume they're fed by an amplifier as well. I mean, is, in other words, do you plan to feed some other speakers with the amplifier that would normally feed these huge speakers or how, uh, what's?
The reason they're, they're not being used right now is because in the last couple of years, we were able to purchase new speakers. Uh, we were actually given two speakers from Dare. Uh, they donated two speakers to us and then we have two others. So when I say large, these things are probably like three feet by two feet and they're tremendously heavy. So they are just put right now to the side and not being used. So, um, somebody else can use them, but for us, it's just too tremendously heavy for us to
I was just trying to understand if they were in use and, and you're just, okay, I got it completely now.
They've been sitting around. We figured we might as well have somebody else use them if they can use them.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Chief Lockland, suffering police chief. Hi, Chief.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Board members. Um, just a quick update. For the month of February, the police department has responded to five hundred and thirty calls for service to date. Um, as the board knows, we're in the process of upgrading and renovating the police station. The project is moving forward and going well. Uh, we've received several flooring quotes and have selected a furniture vendor on state contract that we've begun working with for some pricing. The last few weeks of inclement weather have slowed us down a bit, but the, the project is proceeding well overall. I also wanted to update the board on the status of our police reform collaborative based on the governor's executive order two oh three. We've had our last police reform collaborative meeting and a draft report has been sent out to all of the community stakeholders for review. Once the draft is approved by the stakeholders, I'll be sending the report to all the village board members so they can review it. After the board reviews the report, we'll make it publicly available on our website and social media platforms for public input. Uh, at that point, we're mandated by the executive order to hold a public comment session on the report and provide certification and a copy of the plan to the director of the New York State Division of Budget on or before April first. So within the next, uh, week or so, I should be able to get that report to the board for review. Uh, lastly, I wanted to thank the mayor and the village board, the Uh, lastly, I wanted to thank the mayor and the village board, the Department of Public Works, the Recreation Department, the Suffolk and the Maual Fire Departments, Ramapo PBA, and all the police agencies, including the Rockland County Sheriff's Office and the Ramapo Police Department, for the assistance that they provided to our Department for the Funeral Services of Lieutenant John Mallon. I also wanted to commend all of the members of the Suffolk Police Department for their professionalism and honoring Lieutenant Mallon for his 40 years of dedicated service to the Village of Suffolk. This was a difficult time for our members, as Lieutenant Mallon was a huge part of our department for so many years. But they rose to the occasion and proper, properly honored him. I know he would have been proud of each and every one of them. Lieutenant Mallon will be missed by all of us and has left a void in our department that will never truly be filled. So with that said, that's all I have for my updates for this month, unless the board has any questions.
I have a question for you. When you talk about stakeholders, who are the stakeholders?
So there's, we have a, uh, committee of stakeholders, uh, different people throughout the community, uh, village residents, village board, I'm sorry, village residents, uh, village business owners, um, some, uh, heads of religious organizations throughout the village that all volunteered their time to sit on this committee, um, and go over, uh, different police topics and, and examine our policies, procedures, and just pretty much go through everything and see what type of, you know, changes they would like to see and policing throughout the Village of Suffolk.
So that brings me to the second question, which is your report basically about the changes that the Suffolk Police Department is going to, uh, put forth to the public?
Well, the stakeholders, the, 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 I don't know if you're familiar with the executive order by the governor, but he, he mandated every municipality in the state with a police department to basically do an overall review of their, you know, policies, procedures, uh, the way they interact with the public. Um, there was a lengthy guidebook that, um, had multiple topics that he wanted, you know, us, us to cover and go over. So this report is gonna have some recommendations from the Community Stakeholders Board to the Village Board, um, the direction that they would like to see policing in the Village of Suffolk ahead.
But that's impossible. You're a perfect police department already.
Well, I appreciate you saying that, but I, I, I would assume there's no such thing as perfect and there's always room for some kind of improvement.
Okay. I, I have a question, Chief, um, if I may. I was going through an older email, I think from a couple of months ago, and there was mention of, um, uh, that, that, uh, the employee that's been on light duty that had to be resolved by February. And here we are in February, so I just wanted to know what's the status.
Um, so he is no longer on light duty. He, um, has been placed back on general municipal or 207C status. I don't know if, uh, Mr. Glickel would like to, to speak, uh, on the matter, but, um, you know, basically he's, he's back on 207C status at this point.
Um, I don't know, oh.
This is not something that we would discuss, uh, other than an executive session. It, for both HIPAA concerns as well as.
Yeah, that's why I didn't mention a name. I didn't, I didn't mention a name.
Yeah, it needs to be done, um, that's HIPAA, big time.
Yeah, uh, but what we can say, what we do know is that, um, he's retained counsel for the purpose of submitting a disability retirement application to the state retirement system. And the Department, the chief will be filing what we call a parallel application, which is certainly within the village's rights to do, uh, which is also based on a permanent disability that the officer suffered.
Okay. Thank you. I would also like to thank you, Chief, and the entire Suffolk Police Department on the remarkable sendoff for Lieutenant Mallon. A lieutenant of 40 years of service to the Village of Suffolk, um, quite remarkable man. Thank you. Um, thanks to the fire department, as you said, the DPW. You know, they made sure that the streets were clear of snow and ice and really prepared well in honoring Lieutenant Mallon. Um, the Sheriff's Department, the Ramapo PD, DPW Recreation, the fire department. It was, it was a beautiful sendoff and his family truly did appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Next, Mr. Charles Sawicki, Department of Public Works.
Hey, Charles, you're unmuted. We may have lost him.
Think we lost Charles?
Okay, I think I'm on now. Can you hear me?
There you go.
Okay, great. Um, all right, so I'd like to, uh, provide the board with an update. Um, the Wayne Avenue sidewalk project is currently in winter shutdown. Uh, will resume work, um, sometime next month. Uh, the water department, uh, had a water main break on Lonigan Drive. It was repaired earlier this evening, very difficult, um, situation where we had, uh, actually had to call O and R. They came in and de-energized the power was, uh, the power, and the, uh, power feed was, uh, just adjacent to where the, uh, the water break was. And very, very deep, it was almost nine feet deep. So it, it was a little bit more challenging, uh, but they did a great job and they got it done today, uh, or early this evening. The, um, wastewater treatment plant monthly reports and meeting minutes were sent to the, to the board. And, uh, just wondering if you had any questions, but I think we might have Kyle might be on, uh, if we had any specific questions, either, uh, either Kyle or myself could answer.
I think we're good.
No questions, okay.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, just moving ahead, um, the, um, first item will be application for payment number two in the amount of $52,820 to Covino and Sons Construction Company, Inc., for the Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project. The, uh, next item is, um, this is in regards to the, um, bidding assistance, construction management, uh, and inspection services, uh, for hardening of the water treatment plant and a backup power for a critical, uh, facility, uh, Gosher Projects. So what we had to do there is this was a, um, a Gosher has their own specific format. Do it, um, we publicly advertise, um, as we do for, um, all of our large projects. Um, we had a number of, I think there was, um, uh, the exact number was nine, um, consultants that had submitted, um, their, um, technical and cost proposals. Uh, the, we, um, the procedure was that, um, we had to create a, um, a panel of five members, and they were from the, um, the village building department and the DPW, reviewed the technical proposals and evaluated and scored those, um, those proposals. So out of the nine that were submitted, um, we had, the, the one with the highest score was Pitt and Garwin Deutsch, uh, consulting engineers, uh, did receive the highest score. And their cost proposal, uh, was for $166,944. And it is currently being reviewed, um, by Gosher. However, we'd like to, um, Gosher has, um, recommended that, um, if we could present it to the board and get their approval to proceed with their, um, of course, Gosher would have their final, um, approval. So that's what we'd like to do for, uh, this coming Monday. The next item is, um, the results from the wastewater treatment plant upgrades, contract one. I believe I sent that to the, um, to everyone. So the total there, we had, there's, it's, it's a WIX project, so we have it broken into, um, general, uh, construction contract, electrical contract and HVAC contract. So the, um, the general contractor, um, with the lowest bid was Capolo Service, Inc., with, um, $2,798,890. The electrical contract was Meo Electric, $309,965. And the HVAC was TM Brem, Bremen Service, Inc., for $169,000. So the total cost was $3,257,890. The, uh, engineering estimate from, um, Delaware Engineering was just, just over four million. So, um, those numbers that, uh, came in, um, were below that and we were, we were happy to see that. So again, um, what we have, uh, built into the bid is the, um, we need, the, the village would need to respond within 45 days. The contractor, the contractors, um, will hold their pricing for 45 days. So, um, we'd like to be able, after talking with, um, Rob Flores from Delaware, uh, we'd like to be able to get the board approval to, um, to proceed, but then hold off, um, until we can get, um, the absolute final approval from the DC. Right now, they submitted a couple of, um, questions regarding contract one. There were also with some questions concerning contract two. But the one, the questions for contract one were, um, it was, I think, I think the consensus was, and certainly from, from Delaware, that would not impact, uh, the cost. However, we would like to wait, uh, if we could, um, as long as we could, before we actually issue a notice of award to those contractors. So that would probably be just before that 45 day period. But however, we'd like to be able to get, uh, if possible, get approval from the board to, to proceed with that.
Okay, so can you work with Mr. Magreen, can you work with Mr. Magreeno in regards to drafting up the, um, the resolutions for Monday evening?
Yes, certainly, yup.
So I, I just wanna chime in here, actually, Charles, I just wanna chime in. I've asked at, uh, the last board meeting and also the last workshop, that, uh, we should do a cost benefit analysis to find out what it would cost if we, uh, in pipe our sewage elsewhere instead of fixing the big problems. Uh, you know, I mean, this is, you're talking $3.2 million, uh, out of, I think this, the whole project was $9 million, if I'm not mistaken. So this is just the first phase. Uh, it's a lot of money to put on the, you know, on village residents. And before, I would be willing to vote to go forward on it. I would, I would wanna know how much this is gonna cost village residents when it's bonded versus, um, you know, how much it would cost to send our sewage elsewhere and, and, you know.
Steve, just so you know, that we, yeah, we've been working on that, or I've been working on that in that last, probably two years ago, that the county did a survey or a study, and actually Delaware Engineering was part of that study in regards to consolidating sewer services throughout Rockland County, which they found was unfeasible. I don't have the actual report yet, I'm still waiting on the actual report. I spoke with Rob Flores from Delaware. He represented, um, Rockland County for Delaware Engineering, because he's so familiar with it. We, we have that information, I don't know, Charles, do you have any of that information? I don't believe, I don't think.
No, no, I, I do not. However, um, there's really, um, there's really nowhere to go with it. Um, you know, we do have the West, um, Ramapo facility, which is, you know, is probably, um, seven, eight years old. However, it doesn't have the capacity to, um, accommodate our sewage. Uh, however, they can expand, um, but that would, and then it would be, you know, the expansion of the, uh, the plants.
Correct.
And in addition to that, there'd be significant infrastructure, um, improvements that would need to be, uh, taken place as well. So, um, is it something that, um, might be possible? Um, again, you know, I'm not sure what's in that report. However, it does, um, it, it, there's a lot involved. I mean, that plant would have to be expanded, we'd have to, um, you know, significantly improve our infrastructure to be able to get the, uh, yeah.
Other than the cost of us improving our infrastructure to get it there, the, the cost of them improving it, it wouldn't, you know, obviously would translate to rates, but it wouldn't be something that we're burdening, you know, directly. So I mean, it would be nice to have a cost.
The rates.
The Rockland County build out would be, the, the cost of the build out would be, I believe, anywhere from $25 to $30 million. That would be spread across the district. So that would impact all of the district, the entire district on, on debt and on the rates. And then from there, from, from the Village of Suffolk wastewater treatment plant, you would have to go under the thruway and under the Ramapo River to get the effluent to, or the influent to the plant that they need to build out. The build out is, like I said, I think, I believe they said around $25 million for the build out. And then just the infrastructure for our own infrastructure to get the influent there is, um, challenging.
Yeah, the idea, if I would just, uh, chime, chime in, we, um, Steve, we are in the midst of, uh, we do have a consent order from the DC. So, um, quite honestly, um, there isn't many options. I don't think there's any options, uh, actually, but we, yeah, yeah, so, um, you know, that's where I.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, can, can you guys hear me? It's Kyle.
Yes, Kyle.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Just to, um, to reiterate what Charles was saying, but before we even went this far with this contract, um, the option to maybe pump it out was, was explored. The way it went down is we basically went to the DC and we said, you know, these are our options, what do you think? And we waited until we had good information coming back, until we made the decision to go with upgrading the plant. What the mayor said, that there's still costs that are gonna be involved with, um, first of all, you have a large capital improvement project to even get there. And then they're going to make you pay for whatever they need to increase their plant to be able to take it, because they would have to do that. Mayor, I talked to Rob earlier and he said that he did have, it's a, like a four inch thick binder, he wanted to drop it off in, in person to you.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
It, it, it wasn't really an emailable file.
Right, I know it was a lengthy. That was in a study undertaken by, uh, that was ordered by, um, Governor Cuomo and each county exec was charged with, can, uh, creating a shared service committee. I said on the committee, those are things that we did explore and that was, that was over two years ago. And the, the final report was drafted for, uh, I believe, 2020. So we do have that information.
Yeah, we, we, uh, we submitted data to that as well.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, uh, next item, um, we have a, uh, like to have the board accept the resignation of, um, street refuse labor Travis Jennings. And, um, follow up with that, I'd like to, I'm currently, um, interviewing candidates, um, to fill that vacant position. And, um, we have, I have a couple of, um, candidates coming in tomorrow. I'm hopeful that we can make a decision and I can present it on Monday. So that's where we stand with that. Um, and then the last item is, um, something that, uh, we had a brief discussion with the mayor on, um, with, or the building, the village hall building. So there's, um, significant items that are, uh, in, need to be repaired or in disrepair, wherever you wanna characterize it. Um, you know, for example, the, um, the roof is a, is a problem, needs to be replaced, the windows, the heating, uh, the cornice, pointing of the brick on the outside of the building to, uh, preserve the building, uh, many other things that need to be done. We're talking significant amount of money. So the thought here is to have, um, um, hedging, uh, design group. This is a, a small architectural firm that does a lot of, uh, building assessment and, uh, restoration work um, to review, um, the items that need to be done, establish, um, a budget estimate for the cost of, for repair. And, um, then we, you know, at that point can, you know, the board could, uh, have a better feel for what is involved in, um, uh, in, you know, repairing what needs to be repaired in Village Hall. Uh, and might be other options you might wanna consider. As part of that, um, Um, as part of that um, that proposal, there is um, um, what, what they're calling a feasibility study. So um, what's involved there, they would, of course, we, that would be something that we can either pres- um, proceed with, if the board chooses to do so, or um, or not. And it's also something that we can be, we can do at a later date. But it'd be really looking at the um, essentially looking at the site, the village hall site and seeing what um, could be done there in terms of uh, future development. Um, either um, you know, could, it could be a um, you know, depending, you know, could, it would be essentially de- demolishing the uh, the facility and uh, we're having, or selling if, selling the property as is and the, the developer would come in and uh, essentially uh, probably demolish the facility and build um, either some, something that would be appropriate in that zone. Uh, could be condos, could be um, various things. That would be something that they would look at and um, maybe establish what the value of the property might be and so on, so forth. So that'd be something that we could hold, hold off with until um, if in, in fact you guys wanted to proceed with that. Um, the initial proposal comes in at um, I think it was uh, twelve, let me look at it. Um, twelve thousand five hundred dollars to do the draft report and then the final report.
Charles, I'd like to ask you a question. When you see these different problems that need to be fixed, you're not, you're not authorized, you're not, you're not able to, let's say, just call in a roofer and say, go fix the roof or give me a, you know, a proposal and I'll present it to the board with each different problem.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, it's, but it's not, what, what we want to do is look at the bigger picture. So for example, if we, uh, the heating system would be a good example, we uh, replaced the heating system. Uh, the heating system could be a million and a half dollars. So um, you know, I think we'd want to have a sense of what the total cost will be before we start spending a lot of money. It would be, would be a, a real shame if we spent a million and a half do, thou, uh, a million and a half um, dollars on um, a, a piece of this and then decide that we don't want to, we want to do something different. We, we have, we want to explore other options. So I think it'd be a good opportunity to see what the cost, the total cost will be and then see if there is any other opportunities for us. Um, because it is a very old building and um, it's not something that we couldn't restore, but it's going to be very costly to do everything. We've been kind of holding off on certain things so that we um, you know, we, for the most part, wouldn't be wasting money. We didn't want to spend money and then um, not be, not be able to um, you know, do the entire thing. Cause we'd have to, I mean, we're talking some millions of dollars here, it's significant cost.
Right, so for twelve thousand dollars, we're going to get a uh, a cost estimate of what it would cost to fix the entire building? Then we have to make a decision whether to do it or not, huh?
Well, yeah, that's my, that's uh, yeah, that's what uh, the proposal would be and that's kind of what I'm looking at. Um, I think we're at a, kind of a crossroads now that we need to make a decision to spend some significant money on the building or maybe explore other options.
So Charles, one possibility, the conclusion of this report might be that saving village hall is too expensive and it would be smarter for the village to move village hall somewhere else.
Yeah, I think uh, yeah, yeah, I mean, that's certainly one uh, one possible option, yeah. Depending what the costs come in and what the board's uh, what your thoughts are in terms of, and we're, and looking at what our other options are. I mean, we knew, we'd need to have a sense of what the other option or options would cost, right? I mean, it all comes together.
Charles, does twelve thousand dollars sound to you like a fair amount of money to spend to get the estimate, you know, that we want?
Yes. Well, um, I, I think what we, you know, we will be able to get a um, uh, again, these are, this is an architectural firm. They have a, a background in this, they can identify um, things. Um, it's very difficult to get pricing, like for example, you want to get a, a price from the roof. So, or even say the cornice. So uh, contractors don't like to come out and just give you a price.
No, but if you spend twelve thousand dollars for an architectural uh, report, I don't think, like, as you said, they're not uh, repair people and they really couldn't give you your money's worth for, for a good valid answer on how much it would cost, I don't think, compared to if you spent the money, let's say Adventures, maybe we've heard of them, they're in Hillburn. But it could be any, you know, um, contracting company that deals in renovations and carpentry and all that. Uh, wouldn't it be better to go to a, to a company that deals in renovations instead of an architectural firm?
No, because we're not going to get pricing, you know. So a contractor um, doesn't want to, you know, on a, on a larger project, a contractor, and I, I, I've seen it again specifically for this building. If they have documents, they have drawings, um, they have a spec, they're willing to bid it. Otherwise, they don't want to spend their time and money in, in developing uh, an estimate or a spec and not get the money, or not get the project. So um, that's, that's what we're having. Even um, just, you know, over the last uh, number of months trying to get pricing for the cornice, um, I was successful in talking to uh, two or three contractors. However, that was one of the first things they, they asked for and they, they, at the end of the, at the end of the day said, you need drawings. So um, I think this is, uh, for me, I think this is money well spent. Uh, we got professionals looking at it. There's, there's things that gonna, they're going to identify that um, we may, we might miss by trying to accomplish this ourselves. And I think in a report, it's something that, you know, the board can sit down and uh, and obviously if there's questions, we can, we can get them involved and be sure to be able to answer any questions you have. I, I just think it's um, again, I think it'd be money well spent before we start just um, spending a lot of money on, on, on the, on these repairs. Cause yeah, it's like.
On that, I agree with you, but, but I just wonder about an architectural firm compared to a uh, contracting company that really probably knows better than architects, I would think, on.
Yeah, yeah.
Cost of repairs.
Well, but you're not gonna, do you know somebody that's going to do it? Who's going to do it for me?
I do know the company called Adventures of Hillburn, uh, they're right, you know, they're right five minutes away. Uh, they're a pretty big company, they, they, you know, for twelve thousand dollars, they, or less.
Well, the other thing, you gotta, you gotta remember now Fred, that um, you know, um, contractors um, that are getting you pricing and so on, they, you know, it's all self-serving, right, for contractors? Um, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel comfortable relying on that. I, I just don't think that's the way to go. And yeah, I got decades of experience with this and this is my recommendation. So I mean, that's, you know, take it for what you think it's worth, but um, this is the way I think we should go.
I think the feasibility study, as you said, Charles, is a, is a good, is a good starting point just for the fact that the, the number of items and different items such as the, the heating, ventilation and the air conditioning, that has been problematic for many years now since of, because of the age of it. But would you go ahead and replace an HVAC system for a million or so dollars with having faulty windows throughout the building, you know, older windows? You know, it's just not efficient. So those items that they're going to be able to identify and make these recommendations for, it's just the feasibility aspect of it and not necessarily the construction or repair of it. If that makes sense to you Fred.
Yeah, for the board, this is a very big important decision because if uh, let's say it's a million dollars to do the proper repairs, uh, the recommendation being made to us is instead of spending a million dollars on our old building, we, the board will be asked to consider uh, spending a few million dollars on a brand new construction or a brand new building.
Possibly. You know, it depends on what the study on, on uh, finds.
Yeah, what the answer comes out to be.
Right.
On the total overall amount of money needed to fix village hall, twelve thousand dollars is a very small amount.
No, no, it's not to fix this, Charles, it's not to fix, it's just to get us a price estimate of the total cost of fixing the building. The twelve.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's money well spent.
I, I do as well.
Yeah, yeah, I think it is too.
Yeah, no, I think it's money well spent, it's just an estimate, but I think it's good to know where we stand so that we can make an educated decision.
Agreed.
And it's by objective professionals, not the person doing the work.
Correct.
Right.
Very good, all right. Um.
Okay, um, yeah, I think that, I think that's it for me, is there any other questions?
No, thank you for looking into that, Charles, greatly appreciated.
Okay, thank you.
And the staff did, uh, once again, the Steve's staff did a great job on the preparation for the uh, services that were held. Thank you.
Yeah, they did, they, they always do a great job, I, I appreciate everything they do.
And.
Okay.
The, the three storms in between.
I hope this is it with the snow, right? We keep up.
Hey, don't say that out loud, we're going to get more now that you said. Don't do that, Charles, don't do that.
All right.
All right, good night.
Thank you. All right, Mike will give us the update on Monday. Next we'll roll over to the village attorney, Mr. Janito.
Magrino.
Mr. Magrino, I'm sorry.
That's all right, it happens. Um, so uh, the first item, the continuation of the public hearing on uh, parking, you know, vehicles and traffic. We'll continue with that on Monday, there's going to be a few changes. Um, also, uh, Richard Glickle's um, proposed local law will be Monday, the public hearing uh, regarding foil appeals, I believe we discussed that previously. Um, another item I will ask the board to uh, vote on, I had email correspondence with the chief. The town of Ramapo uh, has a police firing range uh, which uh, they allow the sufferant officers to utilize uh, with no cost other than uh, we provide a certificate of insurance. So um, I'm going to be proposing uh, acceptance of that license agreement to allow the village uh, police officers to use that. I will note that in this year's agreement, it says that um, they are putting in some capital improvements this year and that uh, next year they, they may likely charge a fee, so, um, but this year there is no fee. Um, the uh, public employer health emergency plan, uh, I will put up for the uh, board to vote upon. Um, it was distributed uh, as per uh, the requirements um, to uh, the unions. And uh, I believe it's ready to be voted upon, that is the uh, pursuant to the governor's executive order uh, to prepare a plan, you know, I like to say it's basically what we did last March and April uh, on the fly, so to speak, when uh, with, when the pandemic hit in terms of um, you know, uh, operations, if you will, if uh, God forbid, there's another pandemic, so. Um, so that plan, I believe you have copies, uh, I'll email to everybody uh, ahead of the meeting Monday, but that will be the last uh, item and we already obviously did the fifty Lafayette zone change, so.
There was a lot of work for that um, health emergency plan. I want to thank the village clerk Amy Paffron-Rawat, the village attorneys, they both with the input and, and also the um, union president. So thank you for all of that work. Okay, trustees.
I, I just have um, one thing which Ed, I guess you and I can talk about it offline, but I wanted to find out how we can get our DPW street department um, COVID shots, seeing that they are essential uh, workers and they're out there every day. I know you worked uh, really well with getting the police department done and yourself. So I would like to see what you and I are, you know, how you would suggest or if you want to do it, getting them their shots.
This was, this was already undertaken, this was already addressed, this was addressed with the newly elected state senator, the newly elected assemblyman, the county executive, um, and to no avail at this time. That the, the governor will not allow that designation for them to be in the one B designation. And that's what we're waiting on.
I understand, okay. I'll talk to you about that tomorrow, thank you.
I wanted to bring uh, one thing up, which uh, I presume the resident is going to actually uh, call in. That's what I suggested that they do. Um, but a, a resident had, had inquired about some uh, issues involved, involving snow and plows, basically packing in snow by uh, fire hydrants. And uh, I, I basically suggested that they uh, call in during the uh, public meeting, you know, public uh, monthly uh, work, uh, monthly village board meeting rather, next Monday. Uh, but they also sent me another email basically expressing disappointment that they didn't hear back from the mayor or, or the other board members. So I, you know, I, I don't know, maybe it would be a good idea to respond at least in general to this resident, probably be a good thing.
Um, Ed, do you ever, do you know what happened to the list, which I'm quite sure has changed throughout the years? But we used to have a list back in the day where people that could not take care of their um, fire hydrants. We used to have a list and we used to have a list of uh, people that were willing to either help them or let the fire department know that they were aging and/or sick and couldn't take care of it. So maybe that's something that we could start preparing once again. Yeah, there, that, we used to always have that for years and years and years. So maybe uh, Joanne or Lynn would remember that list, cause I'm sure one of them probably managed it.
Okay. We'll look for the list.
Or no, ask Joanne and Lynn if they remember it and how it was, how it was done. I'm quite sure the list is not relevant any longer.
Hmm, okay. Okay, on Monday, we have a, a guest speaker, the newly elected assemblyman Michael Lawler will present to the village residents and to the board on the status of the uh, New York State and everything that's going on in Albany. So that's what I look forward to and uh.
What is, what is he presenting, I'm sorry, Ed, I missed that.
He's presenting the, the, the new budgets and everything that's going on up in Albany. He'll be presenting to the residents and to the village board.
Oh, thank you, sorry.
And everything that's going on. Okay, that's it, anybody have anything else? Okay, motion to close.
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, we have a good night.
Thank you, safe everyone.